...and join me in place. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody remain standing for a minute, from open silence. Yesterday, our nation celebrated our most important holiday, I don't know if you did yesterday, but I hope you took at least a couple of seconds to reflect on why we are a free nation. On May 4th, I made my annual trek to Washington DC, in particular, International Cemetery. If you ever want to know what Memorial Day is about, go there. Because anywhere you look, at any compass heading, there are hundreds and thousands of tombstones, all perfectly lined up. I guess that's military troops in formation for eternity. If we could have just a moment of silence for those that died defending us, and for those that are still fighting overseas. Thank you, Mrs. Syed.
Before everyone sits down, we also have had, over the past several months, several former faculty members and employees pass away who worked for the Serebville Public Schools. I'd just like to take a moment to recognize five individuals. Lorraine Simko was a librarian at Serebville Memorial High School for forty years, and retired as head librarian in 1985. She was a lifelong resident of Serebville, and graduated from South River High School, and is a graduate of Montclair State University. Mary Delumbo retired as a high school teacher from Serebville Memorial High School after forty years of teaching. She also served as a supervisor of business education for the district. Students who had Mrs. Delumbo as a teacher will always recall her walking the room, saying, "Risks up, and your letters must be perfect." Sam DeLucio was employed by the Serebville Board of Education in the maintenance department for thirty-five years, always lending a hand to ensure that our schools were well-maintained and a safe environment for our students. Born in South Amboy, he lived there all his life, and retired from his work with us in 2004. Marge DiPaolo was employed by the Serebville Board of Education for twenty-seven years as a secretary. She was known by her colleagues for her warm greetings in the middle school office from the far-left desk, and for maintaining meticulous student attendance records. She was a fifty-year resident of the Morgan section of Serebville. And finally, James Gilletti was a fifty-three-year resident of the borough of Serebville, and also a Korean War veteran. He was employed as a graphic arts teacher at Serebville Memorial High School for thirty-two years, and was loved and respected by his students. Can we have a moment of silence for those five individuals who dedicated their lives to our children? Thank you.
Mr. Maginot, has this meeting been advertised in the public media?
Yes, it has, Mr. Maginot.
Take a rule call, please.
Mr. Belk.
Here.
Mrs. Backer.
Here.
Mr. Bishada.
Here.
Mr. Brzinski.
Here.
Mr. Syed.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Here.
Mrs. Riquilla.
Here.
Mrs. Trav.
Here.
And Mr. Maginot.
Present. Close, Mr. DeAngeles.
Sir. During close this evening, the board, under negotiations, discussed the Sable Education Association contract. Under student discipline, IBR report 2012-13, 58 through 59. Under attorney-client privilege, SCA member settlements. Personnel, assistant superintendent for personnel in compliance, new supervisors, and superintendent evaluation.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Iafano, my favorite quarterly meeting, we have a couple presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Maginot. Mr. Vermin, I know that you're getting ready. Mr. Syed, would you like to start this, or do we want to go right into Ms. Vermin's presentation? What would you like to do, Mr. Vermin? Would you like to do your presentation first?
Actually, I'd like you to add both of these.
Yeah, it's all ready to go.
The video is queued.
So why don't we do the video first, and... Alright, why don't you come up and explain it first, Ms. Vermin? And why you're... And I don't know if everybody knows that Ms. Vermin was honored at the Katie Couric Show, so one of the... Obviously, one of the videos deals with that because of her kind nature, and an event that took place during Sandy. So why don't you just give a quick synopsis of what these two...
I was actually looking today, because he's the one who's...
Sade, sure, come on up. I figured you...
Of course.
He would like to say a few words.
Don't be shy.
Don't be shy.
Hi, how's everyone doing tonight? Good, good. Basically, the video you're about to watch took place at the Katie Couric Show in New York City. I wrote in and nominated Sheila Vermin. They do a segment on the Katie Couric Show for women who should be famous. So following the storm, Sheila Vermin, you know, took me in. And you'll learn plenty of things about her, I, and everything else once you watch the video.
I think they edited most of it, I will tell you that, too.
Yeah, so it was a great, very great experience, and she's a great woman, so just enjoy the video.
Okay, right, and then the second video is, instead of your...
Talk into the mic, please, show.
Instead of your conventional thank-you card to the Katie Show, who was so great to us, they sent a van, the kids got to come. Some of them had never been in New York City before. It was really good, watched the TV show refilmed. It's not like it is on TV. It took, let's see, three and a half hours to do five minutes, and then they edited it, believe me, it was like, I know I could never work on TV. My ADD would never allow that to happen, okay? But it was a wonderful experience. So instead of our conventional thank-you card, we did it the Serebville way, with an Annaboto. So you're gonna get that as the second part, okay?
Alright.
Okay.
Hit it. A little advertisement from Dove.
Dr. Iafano, wait for your mic near the floor.
It's going for it. You can't download it. They've trademarked it, so you can't buffer it. You can't download the...
Of course, they advertise it, come on, now.
So today, we've been talking about problem solving, a skill that's a necessity for any teacher. Sheila Vermin, a special ed teacher from Serebville, New Jersey, solved problems and went above and beyond to fix it. We had teamed up with Dove to bring you women who should be famous, people who are making a difference in their communities, that we think you need to know about. And when we got this letter from a very special young man telling us about Sheila, we knew she took the bill. For Sheila Vermin, teaching isn't just a career, it's a calling.
When are you going to college now?
Third grade.
Okay. What, what do you want me to do?
Counting.
Do my taxes for me?
Sure.
Okay. I'm looking forward to that.
Since the age of fifteen, she's been driven to make a difference in the lives of children with special needs. In high school, she was a counselor for campers with Down Syndrome, and babysat kids with disabilities in her neighborhood.
When people say, "Oh, how could you do that?", it's so sad. I never thought of it as sad. Nobody can't do anything. You will do it. You can answer that, and they will do it.
That kind of confidence Sheila instills in her students is something she struggled with growing up.
You start doubting yourself, you look around, everybody judges by appearance, or by as you get into school grades, and how you do and stuff.
Today, Sheila teaches her kids that breadth matters more than grades. And in a decade of teaching, she's given hundreds of special needs students the skills they need to make it in the real world.
Well, work in no time. Two years. They may not remember, you know, what scientific word is for something that a plant does, but if they can learn how to change, or to work with a person, to show somebody skin, and make eye contact, that's gonna make them to be employed.
She helps me get me a job, she helps me, you know, how to stick up for myself. For example, if a kid was bullying me, I would have to stick up for myself.
But nothing could have prepared them for the devastation and heartache that Hurricane Sandy brought earlier this year.
Serebville, we did very bad. We went there, we helped out there, we worked. I had students, several students, that lost their homes, who were displaced for a long period of time.
Sade Manley, who struggled in school because of his ADHD, was one of those students who lost nearly everything.
The most important thing I lost in my home was my Bible. I'm a spiritual man, Hurricane took it out. I'm an adopted child, so I had photos of my biological mother, my biological father, some of my biological siblings, and Sandy completely, you know, walked those away. So I felt like that was one of the last things I had in touch with my biological family, and now they're gone.
For Sade, help came in the form of his teacher, Mrs. Vermin. And to thank her, he wrote us this letter.
I am writing today to nominate my former teacher, my friend, and my hero, Michelle Vermin, as the one who shoots my favorite.
Follow the leader, follow the leader. Our peerless leader.
I was victim of Hurricane Sandy, who lost nearly everything in my home. I was on the brink of having nowhere to live, until Miss Vermin stepped in and demanded that I come stay with her.
So you said to make myself feel at home, so, you know, I did have six years back.
Since the storm, Miss Vermin has shown me love I've never experienced. Not only has she provided good places to stay, but she had provided me food and clothing.
You know what, you told me that this is my dining table.
I did.
So it's half arcade and dining table.
Okay.
I don't think you realize what you've gotten yourself into.
I never do it to a dinner, I spend it to...
She was my special education teacher in middle school and high school. Has proved to be able to inspire both inside and outside of the classroom. I just want the world to know that she is my greatest inspiration.
Please welcome Sheila Vermin. Very sweet. When you heard about the letter that Sade wrote to us, saying that you inspired him so much, how did that make you feel?
It made me feel good. At first, I thought he was kidding. I thought, you know, he never learned to write. I mean, I hadn't just seen your English, so I was surprised that he wrote a letter, it was packed. But, and also, again, I never thought anything was spectacular that I did.
Sade, we should explain, so your family you were living with was displaced by Sandy.
Right.
They moved into a temporary home, but there just wasn't enough room for you.
Right, absolutely not. I mean, it was like we were all running to each other at one point, you know? Everybody can't share our wants, you know, it was just too much at one time.
And so you were lucky enough to have Sheila open up her home and her heart to you, but you're gonna be going back to the family you were living with before fairly soon, right?
Right.
You've been seeing them in the interim.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, same to my family. I go there and visit, you know?
Well, clearly, given the work that you do, and your generosity, you're a very special person, so we're so glad to salute you today.
Thank you.
And by the way, our entire audience is going home with a Dove Let's Talk toolkit, and you can find yours at katiecouric.com/dove. And while you're there, tell us about someone in your life who's making a difference, and she could be featured right here on the show. We'll be back right after this. Dove is a proud partner of the Katie Show, and is committed to inspiring all women and girls to reach their full potential. Together, we can create a world where beauty is a source of confidence, not anxiety. Visit katiecouric.com/dove.
Video is, you wanna just give a little... Did you raise some?
No, I was just texting, no, okay.
Just give a...
The part is our thank you. I feel this is... This is a thank you Serebville style. We don't thank people with letters.
Thank you to...
To Katie Couric.
Okay.
Well, by the way, pieces come from...
Yeah, I'm outta Brooklyn, now I'm down in Tribeca, right next to De Niro. But I've been living forever, I'm in the Sinatra. And since I made it here, I can make it anywhere. Heaven love me everywhere. I used to pop in Harlem, all of my Dominicanos, right there on Broadway. Homie that to that McDonald's, took it to my stash box, 560 State Street. Catch me in the kitchen looking shoes with the face tree. Sunset down Eighth Street, off white Lexus, driving so slow, buddy K is from Texas. Me I'm outta Bexar, home of that boy Biggie, now I'm there on billboard, and I brought my boys with me. Say what up to Ta Ta, chill sipping Montage, sitting courtside, niggas that skew me hot five. Jigga, I be spiked out, I can trip a referee. Tell by my attitude that I'm most definitely full of love. Concrete jungle, I drink some lady, there's nothing you can't do. Now you're in New York. These streets will make you feel brand new. Lights will inspire you. Let's hear it for New York, New York, New York. Catch me at the X, where I'm at a Yankee game. Who I made the Yankee hat for famous, and a Yankee cane. You should know I bleed through, but I ain't a quito. But I got a gang of brothers rocking with my clickto. Welcome to the nothing pot, on this what we celebrate.
Alright. Hey, you ready, Scott?
It's a pity, how do y'all won't make it? Yeah, I got a blood special that I got it made. Jesus paying LeBron, I'm paying Dwyane Wade. Three dice, low, three car Molly. Labor Day parade, rest in peace, Bob Marley. Statue of Liberty, you all need the world trip. Walk with the kingdom, I'm from the new highest city. Concrete jungle, I drink some lady, there's nothing you can't do. Now you're in New York. These streets will make you feel brand new. Lights will inspire you. Let's hear it for New York, New York, New York. Lights is blinding, girls need blinders. Fake step, not a bounce, to the sidelines. Love casually, so simply, like casually, they gradually become worse. Don't fight that apple, we a car up in the E crowd. Now you're in style, into the wind that gets cold and bold, with your skin out. City upset, it's a pity, on the weed, good girls gone bad, the city's filled with hell. Mommy took a bus trip, now she gotta bust out. Everybody ride her, just like a bus route. Hail Mary to the city, you're a virgin, and Jesus can't save you, left thoughts when the church end. Came here for school, graduated to the high life. Ballplayer, rap stars addicted to the limelight. Girl that may just got you feeling like a champion. The city never sleeps, better slip you an empy. Concrete jungle, I drink some lady, there's nothing you can't do. Now you're in New York. These streets will make you feel brand new. Lights will inspire you. Let's hear it for New York, New York, New York. One hand in the air for the big city. Streetlights, big dreams, all looking pretty. No place in the world like it's up there. Put your lighters in the air, everybody say yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
You know, today, we've been talking about problem solving, so...
Well, Ms. Vermin wanted us also to do, which I wonder if everybody understands, the Sable Sandy volunteers, and all that we're doing today, thank you to everyone, was really the idea of Ms. Vermin. She really did not want to come forward, but we kind of pushed her to come forward because of so many people who really did help. A lot of people wanted to be kept anonymous, and we have maybe, I don't know, fifteen or twenty different stories later on that we'll go through with the highlights, but please understand, we're only scratching the surface, the amount of people that did so much for this community during that great tragedy. So I want to thank Ms. Vermin, and I know she's here later to, you know, give out some lemonade, and we have cake and coffee at the end also, to honor everybody. And eventually, we'll get to the, a little bit of the highlights. As you can see, we have like four or five pages of highlights today. So this is really about all the good things that go on in this district. So I'm very glad to be part of it, Ms. Vermin, thank you very much. And your students, today, thank you very much. You're meet the big time now, you're on the big screen, so we expect big things from you. And now, that's right, you made it big time, too. So thank you very much. We'll get back to you shortly. Mr. Maginot?
Okay, Mr. Maginot, we have the recruitment of minutes. Everybody should have the minutes of the regular executive session of May 7th, 2013. Anybody have any questions, comments, additions, or additions from the minutes? Mrs. Backer.
Actually, I'm gonna go back to my question from the May 7th meeting. The minutes from the previous meeting that I had an issue with, that you had said the attorney had stated with that in the minutes, and I said I'd taken up with the attorney. He did not say that, and he was supposed to give you a correction. And he didn't give it. So could we fix that at the next meeting?
He and I had just a quick conversation. I had no idea, trying to get ready for the meeting, so once I confer with him, I'll figure out what he's referring to. I wrote exactly what was set to the par.
Right, but I think the confusion was, when the attorney made the explanation, his explanation was, that's what should be in the resolution, that's not what should have been written in the minutes. So the minutes have to be corrected, as they... Because the minutes were too generic.
In all honesty, I'm very confused, because if it's in the resolution, that is the minute. So let me confer with him as to what the confusion is, because I'm not sure what it is at this point.
Is that for the May 7th meeting, or is that the minutes from the prior?
It was gonna prior.
So how about the May 7th meeting? Okay, so I'll take a...
Sumo.
In your second?
Second.
Rule call, vote to accept the par.
Second by Mr. Fratton, one. Mr. Belk.
Yes.
Mrs. Backer.
Yes.
Mr. Bishada.
Yes.
Mr. Brzinski.
Yes.
Mr. Syed.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Riquilla.
Yes.
Mrs. Trav.
Yes.
And Mr. Maginot.
Long-awaited Student Council Representatives Report. Tony, how we doing?
Senior awards will be held on Wednesday, June 12th. Senior breakfast will also be held on Thursday, the 13th. Seniors will also be departing this Thursday on a class trip to Disney World in Orlando. And on June 7th, students involved in various clubs, sports, and other extracurricular activities will be heading down to the middle school for the annual activities fair in order... Will be heading down to the middle school for the annual activities fair in order to inform the younger students about what they can come forward to. Also, this past week, at the Powderbug Game, the Stand Up To Cancer Club was able to raise over $10,000, which they will donate to charity and cancer research.
Who won the hour of courage? Juniors, juniors. Unfortunately. Thank you, sir, as always. District highlights, Mr. Syed.
All right, we've got a lot, and I'm gonna try to abbreviate the district highlights given the lengthy content. First of all, we'd like to give credit and thank to all the volunteers associated with Superstorm Sandy Relief. And I'm gonna start out with the... I'll start out with Lisa Iker, teacher at the Samstow Upper Elementary School, made a few phone calls to keep people, and was able to get the Serebville Storm Relief Donation Center started, and a Facebook page for Serebville's needs. Lisa drove everywhere in the storm aftermath, and even managed to transport food and needed items from the center to the families stuck without working vehicles along the Old Bridge border. Ken Veers, teacher at the Serebville Memorial High School, the president of the Serebville Education Association, was the electronic connection to our members in Serebville and other towns. Through his email blast on the SCA website, accessible by some with phones, we were able to recruit help for the donation center. The bus drivers from the Serebville School District who ferried people and goods where needed, and to our cafeteria workers who are instrumental in using available areas to prepare meals. And both of those were instrumental directly in the aftermath, and also even during the storm, in ferrying people around. John Danudo, teacher at the Serebville Middle School, stood at Lisa Iker's side and volunteered tirelessly at the donation center. No matter what time you arrived at the donation center, John Danudo was there, helping anyone in need. To the countless numbers of students and staff who got out there on Weber Avenue and helped the families clean out after the storm, thank you. Teachers Melissa Sampa, Nicole Lynch, Alicia Farisi, Jackie Kelly, and Deanna Locke, along with many of their students, are just a few of the staff members who got up and helped wherever they could. The Serebville Memorial High School Boys Soccer Team, under the direction of Coach Nick Sefeli, instead of getting ready for their state playoff game, rolled up their sleeves and got to work at the OLV Donation Center, packing and loading boxes, as well as working in the kitchen. As if that wasn't enough, the team decided to design and sell t-shirts, with the proceeds going to the relief efforts. In the end, the boys soccer team sold 1,089 shirts, and were able to donate $9,601 to the Serebville Storm Relief Center. The Dwight D Eisenhower Elementary School teamed up with a number of school districts around the state to offer relief to our families who have been impacted by Superstorm Sandy. Schools from the Fairlawn School District, Old Tappan School District, Woodgrit, Ridgewood, New Providence, and Milburn, all teamed up with Eisenhower in efforts to assist the families impacted by the storm. The Fairlawn School District had a number of schools that assisted in the relief efforts. West Moreland Elementary School graciously donated boxes and boxes filled with items such as cleaning supplies, clothes, and household items. The students of West Moreland accompanied their boxes with letters and posters from students, which are all brightening up the east office of Eisenhower School. Forest School and Fairlawn also donated boxes of food and supplies for our students. The Old Tappan School District worked closely with Eisenhower School to assist our families. Over 100 brand-new or gently-used jackets were donated to our families, along with endless boxes of brand-new toys for our children. To top it off, they donated money of gift cards in the amount of $3,041, and decided to donate a huge prize that their school had won to Eisenhower, so that our students can enjoy it. Students will be participating in an iDance assembly this coming Friday. Hawes Elementary School and the Ridgewood School District worked with Eisenhower to hold fundraisers for the families impacted by the storm. Their fundraisers brought in an amazing $3,251. The Allen W. Roberts School in New Providence held a fundraiser that raised $567. A fundraiser at a restaurant in Garwood, Rosie's Wine Bar, collected another $850 for Eisenhower families. And the staff at Eisenhower donated $450 to assist the families and students who have been displaced. The Milburn School District was an integral part of the relief process. Working with the principal, Mr. Fiore, they donated over $30,000 worth of Target gift cards to our families impacted throughout the district. Together, the Eisenhower staff and Mr. Fiore worked hard to fill the wish list... Wish? List requests of those families impacted. Toys, clothes, and supplies have been purchased for these families in hopes of making the holidays a little extra special. Gift cards, which will assist these families in rebuilding, had accompanied all the boxes. In the end, Eisenhower worked with the other schools to raise over $37,500 to go along with all the donations of books and supplies. Wilson Elementary School staff members took on an all-hand... Took on an all-hands-on-deck approach to Sandy. Wilson staff members volunteered their time and donated food, toiletries, and necessary items to the Serebville Storm Relief Center. A moving truck from Monroe Township High School dropped off donations of food, clothing, blankets, toiletries, and cleaning products. Because many of our families voiced a concern that they needed privacy and were not comfortable going to the public shelter, Wilson closed half of their gym to provide families with the items they needed in a confidential and private way. Ms. Condorso volunteered her time to organize the supplies. Mrs. Khan and Ms. Mahoney were on staff to provide support for families picking up items from our donation center. For families that did not have transportation, Mrs. Khan organized several packages and dropped them off to the families. Students were also surprised by the arrival of Mr. Fiore, principal of Eisenhower, as he rolled up his sleeves and distributed ice cream and popsicles to the students of Wilson. A giving tree was also organized by Mrs. Davis, Wilson principal, and Mr. Kaiser, PTO... Mrs. Kaiser, PTO president. The tree was designed and assembled in the center lobby by Mrs. Lukowski, Wilson School art teacher. Wish lists were sent home to each family to gather information regarding items that each student and their siblings wished for. The staff and PTO took leaves from the tree and granted wishes such as holiday toys and gift cards to our students and their siblings. Along with the PTO, each family received a $100 gift card to ShopRite for the holiday. Throughout the rest of the season, gift cards to ShopRite were distributed. Two high school students from California, associated with Mrs. McKenna, sent a check that was distributed to the families via gift cards to Home Depot and ShopRite during the Christmas holiday. All the staff members of Wilson came together and collected a total of $2,000 to donate to two of their secretaries that were displaced and/or affected by Hurricane Sandy. We also have a video associated with Arlett School, which you can queue up while I read the following. The Arlett Elementary School Garden Club... The Arlett Elementary School Garden Club, for their donation of twenty-two pounds of fresh vegetables grown on Arlett School grounds. These fresh, homegrown vegetables were used on Thanksgiving Day to feed the families in Cerebral who lost their homes. And we have a PowerPoint on that particular item.
Mr. Byrne, I didn't realize you were here. If you are here, would you like to come up to the microphone and just give a summary on the Arlett School Guidance Project beyond what I highlighted in the highlights?
Certainly.
And if you could just grab a microphone, so people can hear us on that video.
Thank you very much. We just assembled a short PowerPoint here for you, just to explain to everyone what we're doing at Arlett School in regard to our garden. It's something that has become a school-wide effort in regard to showing our children the importance of food, and the importance really of working from seed to fruition. We're also very pleased to announce that we were able to, through our fall planting, donate, those twenty-two pounds of vegetables that we were able to give to the community to help them with, actually, Thanksgiving dinner, so that when they were able to come to the shelter for food, Arlett's homegrown, the salad was there for them, and it was a really great experience for children. Through this, we've also been able to develop our garden, so that we've just received five thousand dollars from Lowe's to further develop our garden, because we have this great idea that not only do we want to grow vegetables, but we also would like to power them with irrigation system and solar panel and wind turbine. We think they are. So that you'll be hearing about many very great things about the Arlett School Garden in the future as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Byrne. Ms. Davis, as principal of Wilson, do you have anything to add to my report, or did I cover it adequately?
I think you covered it all. I believe you had an approach all hands on deck. I have to tell you, every single one of the staff at Wilson Elementary School has something to say about community service. Everyone stepped up, and if there was anyone in need at that school, I mean, we received a number of cards and thankings, having made their holiday, just a lot more special.
Thank you. That concludes the Sandy highlights. I do want to thank everyone on behalf of the board for all of your assistance during Hurricane Sandy. It was really appreciated, it was very much needed, and it's really a part of our culture and the way that we are as a school district, in demonstrating that level of care, and it goes well beyond the nine-to-three school day and simply the education of our children. It really is a labor of love. And Sade, I'd also want to thank you for nominating Mrs. Berman and getting this publicity for her and for the school district. I first met Sade when he was a senior in high school. I was told he wanted to run for the Cerebral Board of Education. I had a chance to meet him during back-to-school for Legislators' Day, and I told him that while he was ready for the board, I wasn't sure the board was ready for him. But again, thank you very much, we really appreciate that. We have some additional highlights from our...
Mr. Sayak?
Yes.
Just to make sure that everybody understands, if we ever finish this meeting, we certainly will have a thank-you cake and lemonade for everyone at the resolve, so I'm sure, I'm sure my, I'm sure if we ever finish this meeting, I'm sorry. But I certainly, I certainly will make my report very quick tonight.
And I will try to abbreviate the highlights. Also, Mrs. Morris here.
I think that's the name. Oh, sorry.
I'm pretty sure. Yeah, in other words, you told me.
Mrs. Morris shaking her head, so I'll take that out of the... Would you like to say anything on behalf of the UES, because I know that you're here as well as the principal?
Just talking about Sandy, I mean, I think just, I know my teachers, obviously, they were there helping, so, you know, they're there for the kids, whether it's during the school day or at school, so I'm very proud of them, and I think we did a giving tree also in the course of school day, because we did share it with the students.
Okay. Thank you. Congratulations to SWMHS DECA students that participated in the International Career Development Conference. The competition provided the opportunity for sixteen thousand students from around the world to compete in many fields of marketing and business. We were thrilled this year to have an overall national finalist from Cerebral, Vikrant Singh, who competed in the field of accounting. Again, I'm trying to abbreviate. Congratulations are also in order for the other six Cerebral DECA students who completed and competed at ICDC. They represented Cerebral in the state of New Jersey well in the field of entrepreneurship, sports management, hotel lodging, and management. These students were Ashley Perez, Shavon Patel, Monica Torres, Kushpoo Jisani, Sonia Parik, and Chris Kopp. In addition, one of our Cerebral students, J. Dip Desai, was offered an internship to work with one of the Fortune 500 companies there. J. Dip was excited to receive this offer and may entertain this opportunity later in his college career. Lastly, Elise Nikango won for designing a pin and T-shirt to represent the state of New Jersey at ICDC, and got to see her work come to fruition as six hundred New Jersey DECA students proudly wore the designed T-shirt and pin before the opening ceremonies. The winners that we have are Shavon Patel, Health Desk and Sports Entertainment Marketing, Ashley Perez for accounting applications, Monica Torres for cap and hotel lodging and management, and Alice Nikango for New Jersey State Pin Design. On May seventeenth, the Cerebral Memorial High School Class Councils, in conjunction with the Stand Up For Cancer Club, conducted a haircuts-for-the-cure fundraiser. During halftime of the Powderpuff football game, the groups hosted a haircutting event with proceeds going to St. Waldrich's Foundation for Cancer Research. The program cut over fifty heads, collected over, the program cut over fifty heads of hair, let's just clarify that. Collected over twenty ponytails and raised over ten thousand dollars. It was an incredible event. Thank you to all who participated, and a very special thank you to the following local businesses who participated in the event. Isabella's Hair Salon, Jewel Studios, Mo's Barber Shop, Trend's Hair Salon, Kelly's Hair Salon, and Camillo's Restaurant. Congratulations to Rachel Castalito, a senior at Cerebral Memorial High School, who was selected as recipient of the New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association Leadership Scholarship. Rachel was honored at NJPSA headquarters in Monroe on May twentieth. Congratulations to Mrs. Dawn Mya, paraprofessional at the Cerebral Memorial High School, for being presented with the Lions Club International President's Award for Outstanding Service. This award is the highest award given by the organization for her service to the community during Hurricane Sandy. A group of students from Mrs. Libby Felton's Honors Accounting Class at SWMHS participated in the Adrian Project on April nineteenth, a one-day immersion experience that exposes students to a non-traditional accounting job as an investigator for the IRS. The Adrian Project started in two thousand two. Cerebral Memorial High School is the only high school in the state that participates in this program. Robert Glantz, a criminal investigator for the IRS, and he organizer for the Adrian Project, said this is a once-in-a-lifetime learning education. This action-packed day hosted at Rider University, team students with college accounting majors as they went through the details of the case that took eighteen months to solve. So once again, it's a real-life experience and very relevant. And finally, congratulations to Cerebral Memorial High School seniors Michael Carey and Kelly Fitzgibbons, who are honored at the GMC Sportsmanship Luncheon at the Pine's Manor on May fifteenth. Michael Carey is a member of both the football and baseball teams, and Kelly Fitzgibbons is a member of the track team. Dr. Alfano, over here. Your reports here.
Oh, it's excellent. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Sumo.
Okay, eight buildings and grounds. This is Request For Wilson School. Any questions with section N? With none, moving to Finance. Resolutions one through twelve are our regular resolutions. Resolution thirteen, on that settlement, will be withdrawn. Again, number thirteen and B will be withdrawn. Any questions with section B?
I have a question. Transfer question.
Ms. Backer.
The capital outlay, now, from twelve, you took eighty-six thousand dollars out to go to, I guess, to buy the bus?
That was for the bus and the refund. The payment now has come in, so the money's back in now.
So the money will go back to you.
Mr. Giandri, an email you sent out later this afternoon about the School Development Corps, can you just talk briefly about that?
Since two thousand two, the School Development Authority is set up whereby the Boards of Education and other authorities can apply for grants to offset the cost of any capital project, and the memo I sent out to the board was, we finally, we finally received the last reimbursement for all applications filed since two thousand two to the total amount of twenty-three million dollars in grants that we received for all of our building improvements that we've done since two thousand two.
So, part of that money was that we requested in two thousand two?
It's the cumulative effect since two thousand two. All the different projects?
Right.
Mr. Maginot, but remember one thing, what they give with one hand, they take back with the other.
I'm waiting for that email.
Was that net something, take backs, or that was just...
No, no, that was for gross, keep in mind, the School Development Authority assessment is something new for the last few years that they've been posting.
And that was all accrued, so I mean, that's not additional money that we have to spend, it's basically...
Right, it was money that you wouldn't, that you would have spent on the projects if the grants were not there.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Next slide.
Number eight, I'm gonna stand on. From Remilio, there's a check out there for the baseball scoreboard repairs. I didn't see the scoreboard working all the season, can you make sure it's working before we go out and check out?
I believe the repairs were done prior to the power, that prior to the power being lost at the whole town. Thank you, Isabella. Moving to C, personnel, non-certified, there's a few resignations, a retirement transfer, an unpaid medical leave, and number five is the start of our extended school year employees that will be working for the Special Education Program. Number six is professional substitutes for that same program. Number seven is the hiring of a custodian. Eight is new hires for thirteen, fourteen substitutes listed as in eight and nine. Any questions with that section?
Yes, Dr. Alfano, or Mr. Giandri, I'll be standing on page seven, custodian, Stan Wabowski.
On page seven, under...
Page seven, under custodian.
First line.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, moving to D, personnel certified, again, a number of resignations, pregnancy leaves, unpaid personal leave. Moving to number nine, a salary adjustment, as noted, peer leadership program approval of two individuals, some advisors listed in number eleven, as noted. Moving to twelve, again, is the extended school year of the certified people that will be working on an hourly basis, as well as school nurses, number thirteen for the extended school year program, as well as substitutes. Also fifteen is the participants in IEPs that we will need during the summer, approval, as well as child study team members that will be needed as an, as needed basis, including speech therapists, which is number seventeen. Eighteen consultants for the marching band, as we do each year. Summer hours for the athletic trainer is also approved here. The rescinding of coaching assignments, number twenty, as noted, and additions of coaching assignments in twenty-one. Twenty-two are professional days that we usually approve at each meeting. Some iPad training, as noted, in number twenty-three. Twenty-four is to provide supplemental services. This is part of No Child Left Behind, Title III, which is required. Twenty-five are some people, and you're gonna see a whole bunch soon of staff that we're gonna be approving for next year. And two thousand twelve, thirteen, are a few substitutes that we're hiring for the last month of the year. And twenty-seven is an agreement between the board and a past teacher. Any questions?
Dr. Alfano, on the iPad training, is there an opportunity for us, especially if we're gonna do something like this, to maybe look at other districts, like maybe South Amboy, South River, open it up to them, charge them, and maybe pay the cost that we're incurring for the instructor? And I know you want to keep class size small, because you don't want it to be very large, but this could be an opportunity for a shared service arrangement.
We had, we had such a...
We don't have any room.
Right.
Okay, okay.
This was actually an extra session that we added. Mrs. DeSantis was scheduled to do one, and we had to schedule another one because we had such a response from our own people, and I believe that even this did not satisfy the waiting list that we have for our own people.
Well, we gotta take care of our own.
We have to take care of our own.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions with that? Moving to E, under Policy, want to congratulate the gentleman there, which is the becoming an Eagle Scout, Jonathan Orlando Moody. I think Ms. Maginot would like to say a few words.
Yeah, we're gonna approve this resolution this evening, and I am going to attend his Eagle Scout Court of Honor on June seventh and present the resolution after the Board of Education. Thank you.
Okay, moving to F, Curriculum. Our regular resolution for PIP, fifty-eight and fifty-nine, different placements as well as services for special education students. Moving to page twenty, and that runs you straight through to page twenty-one. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to G, Co-Curricular. Talking about the Samson Upper Elementary School orientation for the incoming fourth graders, June seventeen. All of this, having retroactively an ice cream social, which I'm sure was packed, I remember. Mr. Burke was running out of my meeting because he said he had four hundred little kids coming in, and they were ready to eat some ice cream, so I'm sure they pretty much rocked the house. MetLife Stadium, and doing a, approved MetLife Stadium, Cerebral Memorial High School class, to see the stadium and the inner workings of that situation. The Middle School ACH Program, a walking field trip. Any questions with those extracurricular activities? With none, moving to H, some transportation resolutions, two retroactive trips, ten regular And once again, I would like to thank everybody who helped in Sandy, and that concludes my report.
Any board discussion on the agenda before I open up for the public for comment? There are none at this time, I'd like to open up for the public for any comments or questions on the agenda items only. I will open it up again for the public for any business that may become appropriate before this board. At this time, anybody from the public have any questions or comments on the agenda items? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, I'll entertain a motion to file an exception to the superintendent of the court.
Second motion.
Need a roll call vote.
Mr. Bautista?
Yes, I have noted.
Mrs. Backer?
Yes.
Mr. Bishada?
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes, exactly, I noted.
Mr. Sayak?
Yes.
Mr. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Rituia?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Yes.
And Mr. Maginot.
Yes. Mr. Sayak, delegate to New Jersey School Board Association.
I attended the assembly on May seventeenth, and they voted as expected and supported all of our recommendations. That concludes my report.
No committees met, that I know of, discussion. Curriculum met? Okay, Mrs. Backer.
Do you want to do it?
No, you can do it.
The curriculum committee met, the basis of, actually, the entire meeting was to discuss the change in the high school curriculum, the increase in the credit requirements for when we switch over to the full-day senior, which will be moving to one hundred and thirty credits, which the board voted back in October to approve that. The administration, we discussed the new classes, which we voted on, and certain, right now, it's still a work in progress, and I think maybe if it's done by September, maybe we can bring a presentation in here with the high school, with Mr. Brown or whatever, to show the public what we've been doing with the changes with the curriculum. And so right now, the administration is moving forward with one hundred and thirty, we've got new teachers in the budget for next year to move forward towards that goal, and the goal was, from the direction of the curriculum committee, was to try to increase the rigor in our curriculum at the high school. So, we're still working on, it's still a work in progress. But we're moving ahead at a good pace, I think.
Thank you, Mrs. Backer. On the discussion, Mr. Sayak, I'll hand it off to you from continuation from the last meeting and what our updates are.
All right, from our last meeting, we received the two pieces of information the board requested, one being a proposal from the educational consultant, one being a proposal from the architect. If no one objects, I'm gonna start with the proposal from the educational consultant, since form should follow function. We've all received a copy of it. Are there any questions or discussion with regard to the services that are being proposed? Specifically, does the board feel that the services being proposed are what they expect, and do they meet our needs?
Anyone have an objection?
Anyone have an objection to the cost?
I have an objection.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I don't know that at this point that we, it's determined that we necessarily should need them right now. I, I don't think we're that far along to spend $6,000 to ask them what we want to do. I, I don't think I'm ready to do that, no doubt.
Well, I thought the, the intent from what the Board had said was we're going to have these individuals come in and basically look at our facilities and give us information to help us make a decision in terms of where we want to go.
I, I don't even think after the last meeting, I felt a warm and fuzzy that the Board was together on where we were going. We, we didn't determine anything about class size yet, or going, and I don't, was it determined that we didn't need another facility? I, I still think that we need to discuss what our class size needs to be, to determine what, whether we even need a facility. We do have one school that isn't completely at capacity and quite below capacity, so I don't know, I don't know how I'm ready to spend money on an outside consultant.
This, this was the information that we requested to have in order to see which way we're running on.
I don't really, I don't understand why we need somebody on the outside to tell us. I, I don't understand.
Well, then, and, and that's fine. I guess I'm a little confused because I thought, I mean, we asked everyone their opinion in terms of getting these proposals, and I thought everyone was unanimous. So, that's why we got them. If we don't want to go in this direction, that's fine.
What is this outside $6,000 going to give me that the administration can't give me?
Uh, Mrs. Syaikh, are you dealt specifically with the firm? Would you like to, uh, go into detail on what they can provide that the administration cannot?
What they can provide, they're going to look at overall the attendance areas, they're going to disaggregate it, they're going to meet, they would meet with both the administration and with the Board members to establish what exactly we are looking for. They're going to look at the functional capacities of every building, they're going to look and give us some real financial information about what it would cost, let's say, to go K5 or to open Solover, if that's what we decide to do, as far as staffing and materials and so on and so forth. They're, um, you know, they're going to look at special education, they, they have experience, they've done a number of these studies throughout the state, so I think to bring in someone from the outside that has a lot of experience with doing this would, would really be very helpful.
So, you know?
Yes, Mrs. Ziegler.
This sounds like it's an outside facilitator that's going, well, someone that's going to come in and facilitate a discussion for us? Um, someone from the outside looking in, giving us information? Or am I reading that wrong?
Well, I don't know if he's really going to, I, I think the report would facilitate a discussion, if someone coming in from the outside with an unbiased opinion and who has experience with dealing with this.
Is his goal to give us his opinion or to facilitate our discussion?
He's, I think he's going to make conclusions, recommendations, and give us things to consider.
What, what do you mean, an unbiased decision versus like, is it an unbiased opinion? Like?
Well, no.
We can't have an unbiased opinion from our own administration?
No, no, perhaps, perhaps I worded that incorrectly. It's someone who has a great deal of experience in doing this, this is their specialty, this is something they look at, they look at it for, for school districts, and I think that they can provide us with things that perhaps we, both as administration and Board members, have not thought of.
See, I think that's the key for the small amount of money. I, I think when you look at your own house, you know, obviously, the Board is split which way we want to go, so we look at that. Have someone else come in who has no doggone fight to put over, to give us some clear analysis, and the question I would have with someone like that is why are 87 other districts in the state configured like we are? What are those advantages of being like that? I mean, things that perhaps, you know, maybe there's something he'd say, and we'd say, whoa, that we didn't even think about that.
Right.
I, I, I think, I think the money, you know, there's a cost to everything, I, I get it, but there's also a value to things. And I think that's a valuable thing for somebody to come in and say, look, this is the way you want to go, and this is why you want to go that way, based on your demographics, based on your infrastructure, uh, based on your educational philosophy.
So, they're going to give us financial data as opposed to, I guess, where's the crossover with that if we're hiring an architect? I, I guess.
The architect is going to deal with your building needs. Yeah, the architect would, as I read this, would deal with the building needs, and then this individual would say, well, if you go with this configuration, you would need an additional art teacher, music teacher, building principal, et cetera. Then we give you these staffing costs.
What we're going to do inside of them.
Correct.
The staffing, the materials, the supply.
Are these people education people?
Yes, they are.
They're all, what type of people are they?
Uh, Dr. Bowden, who, um, is the one that we've spoken to, he's a superintendent up in Bergen County, I forget what.
He's running, he's currently the superintendent of two school districts, East Rutherford and Beckton Regional.
Right.
That's what he does?
He's an interim right now.
He's an interim.
And he does this on the side? Life is a side business?
Part of the consulting firm, yes.
Part of the consulting firm. One of the other people, um, the, um, A N Tunes, I believe she's an assistant superintendent or an interim assistant superintendent in Summer, in I think Somerset County. These are, these are educators.
Mrs. Trapp?
I think that for the $6,000, they're going to be able to answer a lot of questions we don't even know to ask. So, I think it's well worth the $6,000.
Okay.
Mr. Syaikh, just one thing. Mr. McInon, you have a listing, I think, of 87 or 88 school districts that have a middle.
That are configured similar to us.
Okay. Do you, do you have a listing of each one of the 87? Do you have a listing number?
As far as the name of which school district?
Yes, yes. See, the reason I ask that, how many are added? That's going to be my first question. You're listing the schools, I believe.
Yeah, um, yeah, Bergen and the counties, Bergen, Bergent, and, um, there's the schools, the names of the, actually, elementary schools, not, um, I can't get from this data whether they, what, socioeconomic district factor groups they're in. I mean, you can pick apart that and find that out.
See, the reason I ask is because there's 500 some schools that don't, though.
Yeah, I, I, look, and, and that's, that's a question I would have. Why is that?
Yeah.
So, is this consultant to discuss a K3 versus a K5 scenario? Is that what we're, like, I guess, is that what we're down to?
I, I think, I think the analysis that he provides will steer us in a direction.
Or may steer us in a different direction.
And, uh, and completely other proposal. So, is this, they're going to give us the financial information as to like, say, how much it would cost us to open Solover, how much if we reconfigured?
They, they will give us the financial information, because I asked them to include Solover in there, um, for the cost for staffing and supplies and materials, the transportation costs. They're going to look at the special education, the distribution of special education classes and things like that.
Are they going to tell us how much space we need to give to the architect to give us the building cost? Like, where is that coming from?
The architect is going to look at your current building configurations and consider the items, um, on converting your K3s to K5s, that's an option he gave, and I believe in one of them, he even spoke about looking at special ed and where they can go. I don't believe he, the architect is going to specifically say, four classes here, three classes there, that may be a marriage of the two proposals at some point in time to work on those kind of things.
This, um, this educational consultant would also look at both the current and potential class size outcomes to, or, or the different options that we're going to definitely ask and to explore.
And one of the things I think as Board members you should ask yourselves is, you know, we might not have any doubt whether or not the, our administration can provide an unbiased perspective. I think the question becomes, will we accept it as unbiased? Or will we have, will we be looking at it through a lens of, you know, they've got a specific direction in mind?
Well, I think that, that's the prob, we already got direction from our administration, but we want other direction. Our administration gave us direction, but we want to be looking, so now if we get somebody in as, from somewhere else, maybe we can all make a decision.
And maybe don't even support the administrator's decisions for his.
Or maybe go with different.
Well, I, I, I think what we need, we need some information. I think everybody's in agreement, this was talked about in meetings we had over a year ago, is that if we were going to build a school district somewhere from scratch, without any infrastructure, start from scratch, we would build K3, K5 district. Problem, because that's the paradigm, that's the current thinking. But that's not what we have. Some time ago, we built a school with the idea of having enough elementary school for the fourth graders. Now, what needs to be done if you were going to put, you know, seven, six, and seven-year-olds in that school? There has to be some infrastructure changes. I think when the school was built, it was built for kids of a certain age. Uh, we have a system that, in my opinion, works, and we're going to dismantle that still for reasons unbeknownst to me. So, I think someone coming in and looking at this and saying, hey, what you got here works, why do you want to change it? Or, this is what you can do, and this is what it's going to cost you to do that. I think that $6,000 is very well worth it to have two educational professionals come in and say, hey, did you think of this? And then maybe will somebody, maybe you, Mrs. Backer, maybe I will have an aha one and say, I didn't think about that.
Right, and I remember we had discussed that at the curriculum, at every district meetings, like, maybe we can have a kindergarten school, or maybe we can choose Truman for something other because of the problems with schools. Yes, I agree, I agree with that. I just thought we had discussed at the last meeting, someone had brought up, um, the capacities, and I didn't know that we, did we rule out that we can't use our current capacity as far as, um, just moving some of the overcrowding in Eisenhower to one of our other elementary schools without looking at an additional infrastructure, another building? I didn't know that was ruled out yet.
So, your, your question is, is how much longer can we go before we have to do something?
Well, I, I just thought this was premature. I didn't know that we ruled that out already.
Well, we, we, we could, we could take this circle and make it wider, and, and take some kids, or more kids, I think Olive has some more.
Right, and that's what I had thought was one of the issues that it brought up, and we decided we're not going to do that.
Dr. Alfano, didn't you say we were going to look at taking some of the kids out of Eisenhower, at least for now, shifting them into Arleth? For now?
We're, we're all looking at that as we're going into next year.
Overcrowding, but, but that doesn't take care of where we're headed in the next 10 years, I'm being prepared for that. So, while, while we're, that'll satisfy us now, we need to look down the road, because that'll get us a couple of years, but that's not going to get us all the way.
No, and, and that's a very good point, and I've talked about that for a minute, because every time I come over to the Garden State Park, I come in back home, and I look over there National Ed, same as though, 2,000 homes are built. At what point do we have to say we have to do something now? And not when the homes are built and saying, you know what, we got overcrowding now in every school? And, and that's.
So, these people will take into account the National Ed property as well?
Yes, they're, they're going to take the previous demographic studies, and they're going to use that, and they're going to take all of that into account, yes.
So, I'm sensing we may be ready for a motion?
I'd be okay with this, but if, I, I think that before we move on the architect, we need some guidance.
Well, we'll take that, we'll take that one next, with regard to the architect.
Are we okay with this proposal?
And Mr. Syaikh, just, our intentions were to bring, bring formal resolutions to